Make this country better and just everyone I've worked with over the years. So today, we're here to uplift them, fight for them, and make sure to tell everybody that L.A. is for everyone. You know, I hope that this is an example of what we need to be doing in this moment, in this time, is that we're not going to take it sitting down. We're going to stand up, we're going to protest, we're going to exercise our First Amendment rights, and we're going to make our voices heard into the point that they cannot ignore us no longer.
The idea of Denim Day came from an Italian case of injustice and has grown into an annual event. Council members joined in wearing denim to show L.A.'s support for victims of sexual assault.
Welcome to Denim Day in L.A. Denim Day began in 1999 as a bold response to a devastating injustice because so often is what we see and experience as women or any victims is the silencing of our voices.
It was a rape case in Rome, Italy, where the judge overturned a rape conviction, saying that it couldn't be raped because the woman was wearing tight jeans, therefore it was consent, and he won the appeal. And the women parliamentarians in Rome wore jeans as a protest on the steps of the Supreme Court.
It's so important, the campaigns that we have, but this one is particularly important, and it's because the city council members actually come and speak out against that kind of behavior and to try to change the culture of rape in our city and then in our country and across the world.
Together, we are so much stronger, and together, we can ensure that change. In an environment where so often victims are silenced, we together will amplify our voices, and that is what we are here to commemorate each and every day.
Today marks 26 years of Denim Day, 26 years of powerful, visible defiance in the face of shame and injustice, 26 years of saying no more. We wear denim as a testimony, we wear denim as resistance, we wear denim to reclaim our stories and stand up to the systems that blamed us, silenced us, and ignored us. We wear denim to say we believe survivors, all survivors.
You didn't do anything to deserve the experience that somebody else forced on you. And don't hold it for years and decades. Get some therapy, tell somebody, go to Peace Over Violence, and talk about what you experienced, and talk about how we can make change and support others that have had the experience.
The county of L.A. declared Denim Day in the county, and the city is Denim Day in the city. L.A. USD has declared Denim Day throughout the district. So it's a really important day for L.A. to pay attention, and hopefully, people will learn more about what causes sexual violence and how to prevent it.
The L.A. wildfires were another blow to those working in the film industry. Councilmember Adrine Nazarian welcomed industry workers to City Hall as the council approved his motion to make filming in L.A. more affordable.
We're in front of City Hall right now. We just took a unanimous vote of a motion that I introduced with several of my colleagues to make sure that we help protect filming in Los Angeles.
Production has really dried up. We actually have members who haven't worked in almost two years. Two years, think about that. They've exhausted their unemployment, they've run out of healthcare, they don't really have money to pay bills, buy food, just do the normal, everyday stuff to survive. So that's why this was really critical for us to be here and support.
I think about the downtown ecosystem when I think about this problem because we've seen shuttered businesses, we have empty storefronts, we have less foot traffic on our streets. Why not use this moment to increase production in parts of our city that also need that economic boost?
This was a first step to making sure that we look at how we can reduce permitting costs, how we can reduce parking to personnel usage and other permitting fees in order to make sure that we're lowering costs on all fronts and that filmmakers are motivated to continue filming and making films in Los Angeles.
Those of us that come here from other states and other cities, we come here because this is the mecca. This is the place where all of the magic happens. And the idea that in the last four or five years, it's really hard to get a job in the city.
This was a first good step to make sure that we let entertainment industry know that Los Angeles is listening, cares, and wants to take the right steps to make sure that we protect and preserve and grow this industry back again in Los Angeles.
The old zoo area in Griffith Park is giving way to something new. Councilmember Nithya Raman and the Department of Recreation and Parks joined community members to break ground on what will be a new space for the performing arts.
We're in Griffith Park at the site of the Old Zoo, where we just broke ground on a new performing arts center that's going to be located right here. It is the site of years of performances of the Independent Shakespeare Company. But once this performing arts center is built, we're going to host Shakespeare and so much more art in the beauty of Griffith Park.
Over the last 14 years, we've had to build a temporary platform there. We're on a slope right now, it's kind of difficult to build that, so it can never really be that big or that high. So we had sightline problems with the audience, the sets couldn't be all that impressive, it's very hard to light from above. So this is going to have a much bigger stage, a tall, overhead grid, the lighting, the sets, everything's going to look so much more impressive.
When you have art performed in nature, that it attracts families, young people in to enjoy it, Griffith Park in particular is such a beautiful gem here in the city of Los Angeles, and to have the ability to showcase art here, as is done in major parks across the world, this is something that Los Angeles has long overdue for.
One of the things that I think I would love to highlight just about this space is that it's seen so many different functions. It was the Old Zoo before the L.A. Zoo opened up, then it became sort of a picnic area. It's still a space where we congregate, really getting those family moments together. These are places where people celebrate, you know, that's what we say about our parks. They're places where people recreate, but they're also where, you know, spaces where people celebrate.
People have been waiting for the groundbreaking of this theater for a very long time. Actually, my predecessor in this role, Tom Labonge, first thought about doing this 14 years ago. For me, it's just been an honor to be able to move this project along and carry his dreams forward of making a permanent home for art right here in Griffith Park.
May is Wildfire Awareness Month. L.A. City Hall now has its own digital guide, and the Port of L.A. marks a decade of public access investment. These stories up next on City Beat.
In the wake of the L.A. wildfires, the city's Emergency Management Department wants Angelenos to know that May is Wildfire Awareness Month. Wildfires are unplanned fires that burn in areas like forests, grasslands, and in places with dry brush or heavy vegetation. Depending on weather conditions, these dangerous fires can spread quickly and can devastate the natural landscape, along with neighborhoods and communities. The Emergency Management Department suggests preparing a personal and family communication plan that details how loved ones will communicate and reconnect in the event of a wildfire. Keep a list of your emergency contacts, set up group texts in your phone, use social media to share your status, and practice the plan with your family. For more information, visit emergency.lacity.gov/newsletters. A free digital guide to Los Angeles City Hall, which allows users to explore the building's history, architecture, and legacy, is now available online. The guide was made by Project Restore, a nonprofit which uses public-private funding to support historic restorations and upkeep of L.A. landmarks and public spaces. According to Project Restore, the guide brings behind-the-scenes stories of L.A. City Hall to life with video, audio commentary, and curated content. Points of interest in the guide include ceiling murals, the Zodiac Medallion, Rotunda Floor and Dome, the Council Chambers, and Majoral Portrait Gallery. Users can access the free digital guide to L.A. City Hall via desktop, mobile browser, and on the Bloomberg Connects app. For more information, visit projectrestorela.org/digital-guide. The Port of Los Angeles is celebrating 10 years of its Public Access Investment Plan, which puts 10% of its operating income back into the community. According to the port, the plan links cargo success to community investment and involves greater public input into building projects. Since 2015, the port has invested over $400 million into San Pedro and Wellington Harbor communities through waterfront projects, initiatives, and education. Recently completed projects include Wellington Waterfront, San Pedro Town Square, and road improvements for West Harbor, which is due to open in 2026. New planned public access projects will be announced by the port later this year. For more information, see the News Release Archive tab at portoflos angeles.org/news.
The Festival of Books celebrates storytelling in all its forms, and every Angelino has their own story to tell. The result is amazing tales, poetry, performance, and art happening beyond the pages.
We're at the Festival of Books. I'm here with the Department of Cultural Affairs. I'm working with the Community Arts Division and Outreach as an artist. I'm really excited, this piece myself and the other artists with our division, we put together. The basis of it is that you're in Los Angeles, you're an Angelino, you have a unique experience, perspective, and a story to share and tell. You know, we can be like neighbors, or we can be clear across the city, but we all come together and it really tells like a beautiful story.
Well, I believe this event, it's great to not only bring the community together, but also to expose everybody to cultural differences and to enhance the knowledge of those experiences.
This Festival of Books is a wonderful place. We have mystery writers, we have nonfiction, we have poets, we have young adult literature. I teach high school students, and I teach poetry to my 11th graders, and there is nothing more compatible than young people and poetry.
Never really liked lighting or poetry ever, and then he kind of just, you know, my teacher, his songs, he kind of just got me into it. I started writing my poetry, and I started noticing more of the beauty of L.A. and the comfort and everything. And because of him, I keep writing, I keep writing like every day.
The Los Angeles Civil Rights Department is thrilled to be here, an incredible exhibition. Los Angeles is made up of the fabric of an incredible diversity of people, and every single person has a story to tell.
This festival is absolutely lovely. People are just having a great time, the energy is absolutely positive. The kids, adults, everyone is having a fun time. I mean, as an artist, that's all that matters to me, is that people are enjoying themselves, and they're just loving the process of making something.
It was all hands-on at Expo Park. L.A.'s Public Library and Los Angeles Maker Fair brought a supersized science fair to the park for creators, innovators, and inventors.
We have one of the biggest celebrations for STEM and makers here in the city of Los Angeles, right at the Expo Park South Lawn, and we have over 250 exhibitors here. You will find people exploring STEM as they're doing hands-on activities, but in the meantime, we also want people to have a chance to discover their own talent and interest in STEM. That's science, technology, engineering, art, and math.
So today, I have for you the robotic dog in progress from the Cal State L.A. robotic dog research project. This is a dog that is meant to be a guide dog around the campus eventually, particularly for those with any mobility problems that might need help being led around the more complicated parts of the campus.
Today, we're showcasing the PAPRA, which is a powered air purifier respirator. We developed during the COVID-19 pandemic to filter for antigens, but we've discovered so many more use cases for woodworking, for metal fabrication, wildfires.
You'll get to see these makers who's already turning the STEM skills, the STEM knowledge they have from ideas to something real, to all sorts of interesting, fun stuff.
So I make handmade products. I make these at my home. All of my products are eco-friendly, and they are all reusable. I have these candles, and sometimes I put like these dried flowers around them, and this one's actually lavender scent.
Anyone that has any sort of knack for invention, it's really important that those skills continue into the future to help the people around us. We're only going to progress as a society if we uplift each other. So projects like this that are meant to help is what's going to lead us into the future.
There's no better way for you to know what making is until you're here. Everyone has a maker in themselves. We want you to get inspired.
Who doesn't love a spring celebration? The L.A. Public Library at Vermont Square held a festival for the season, and it was one for generations of Angelenos to enjoy.
So we're at the Vermont Square Branch Library, we're at 48th and Budlong, and we're having our spring festival.
A lot of resources for the community to, you know, just come out, enjoy the spring break, because you know, L.A. USD is on spring break right now, so they've got some resources in here for the family.
I live right around the corner from the event, you know, and my friend, she called me, and she said, "Come to the park." So I came to the park.
And today, we're having a little history event, you know, bringing the community together, very nice, you know?
It's right in people's backyards, it's like they're bringing the event to you, and it's a lot of really good programming, and I think it's a really nice thing to take advantage of it.
Everybody's welcome, and we just have a lot of fun stuff going on. We have a story walk here, carnival games, we have community members coming out and talking about different things that are available in the community, tabling, so yeah, just a little bit of fun for everybody.
First color I want to sing about is azul. Oh, is that blue? Azul, who has azul?
I think it's a great thing that the library does, you know, the Vermont Square Library, it's the oldest library in L.A. Public Library system. Just being able to have this space here and being able to use it in a productive manner, communities, families can come, make art, they can sing and dance, you know, that sort of thing.
I just want to say how much we love our librarians here and how much we love this library. It makes this community a much better place, and just thank you to the Vermont Square Library.
Good. I grew up here, I used to go to this library all the time. Yeah, I really love this library, but we moved away. But this is the library that I will return to if we move back over here, and I really love this library, it's very nice.
Seeing all the kids that come into the library and the families, and meeting new people that didn't really know the library was here, and then they come by and they say, "Oh, this is the library," and then we invite them in for other events, and it's just great to see old friends and meet new people.
In this week's feature story, Stephen David Simon of the city's Department on Disability speaks with our Ann Police. He reveals the crucial work of the department, especially as the city gets ready for world visitors in the next couple of years.
Let's just start with the basics. What is considered a disability here in the city of Los Angeles?
Under the ADA, it's having a physical or mental impairment that impacts a major life activity. And a major life activity is hearing, seeing, talking, standing, learning, walking, bending over, your body working, your circulatory system, your respiratory system. It's really very broadly defined, and we try and support anybody with a disability. We have an ADA Division that works mostly with other departments and to help them make their programs, activities, and facilities accessible, everything from sign language interpreting to captioning and so on. We have the city's AIDS Coordinator's Office. They run the city's AIDS prevention and education programs, including the city's syringe exchanges and overdose prevention. The Durable Medical Equipment Program is something in our Community Outreach and Education Division. It literally provides equipment for people with disabilities. We're trying to be a provider of last resort, so if somebody needs a wheelchair or a walker or roller later, practical things people need on a day-to-day basis that it might take months for them to apply for state benefits or federal benefits, for example, we try and get those to Angelenos. In emergency situations, that whole world changes. My department is very invested in emergency preparedness, response, and recovery, and the fires really brought that out. So the DME program, temporarily, we provided hospital beds, we worked on emergency backup batteries for people who had equipment that might lose power or had lost power, and these were really life-saving endeavors. But we spent hundreds of hours, we were in the operations center, we go into the shelters and make sure they're accessible, and try and reach out directly to people with disabilities who are in that kind of space. So my team does extraordinary work.
How is our transportation as far as people with disabilities are concerned?
It's such a high need, it's a tough mandate to get there. So we've got L.A. DOT in our bus systems, we've got Metro and the train system. The beauty is, for example, the trains are much newer than in New York or Washington, and so we actually have a much more accessible rail route. Our buses are generally accessible, but it's important that we make sure, for example, all our drivers are trained. I have a colleague, I believe he lives in the city of West Hollywood, who's got cerebral palsy, and it's hard for him to board a bus, and he does not use a walker or a wheelchair. He doesn't like to, he can, he does sometimes, and he's gotten to a bus and asked for them to put the ramp down and been told, "Well, you don't have a wheelchair, we don't have to do that." I said, "Well, no, you actually have to do it for anybody that needs that ramp to access it." So sometimes it's education. Again, I think most of our drivers are well-changed for city and county or city and metro, but a lot of it's just education. Transportation is huge.
And are the Olympics and the FIFA World Cup, are those things you look to and go, "Okay, this is our drop-dead moment, we have to have X amount of things done by this time, we have to."
The Games are going to have an extraordinary impact on Los Angeles. So the Olympics and Paralympics, the FIFA World Cup, they got a Super Bowl in between there, these already are becoming a driver to make sure accessibility is in place, and we're trying to work with that. The hitch is, the scale it needs to be done on is truly extraordinary. I got to actually travel to Rio for the Paralympics, which was a wonderful moment, and actually sit in on the conversations with the International Paralympic Committee and International Olympic Committee. And you're competing against other cities, you're trying to sell why your city is the best for the Olympics and Paralympics, but at the same time, you're also trying to figure out how the Olympics and Paralympics are going to really change the legacy of the city you're in. It's the legacy energy. And our legacy, we want accessibility to be one of those top four or five items, where this city will be physically more accessible, will be digitally more accessible, and the attitude and understanding of Angelenos about inclusion and accessibility will be greater than it's ever been.
In this week's Things to Do, let's salute Recreation in Northridge Park, volunteer to help out in Runyon Canyon, and pay tribute to a Mexican icon at El Pueblo. All this up next on Things to Do.
The city of L.A.'s Recreation and Parks Department and Councilmember John Lee present the Annual Salute to Recreation Family Festival, and everyone is invited. Enjoy a host of activities at Northridge Park over the weekend of May 16th to 18th. The festival will have live entertainment, an international village, a marketplace, a children's area, carnival rides, and games. On Friday, there will be a Battle of the Bands contest for teens and a senior dance in the rec center. Over the weekend, there will be pickleball, youth volleyball, and soccer tournaments taking place. Head to Northridge Park to enjoy this Salute to Recreation Family Festival over the weekend of May 16th to 18th with various hours each day. See the full lineup at laparks.org/salute-recreation. The Sunset Fire left a lasting impact on Runyon Canyon Park. Now, Councilmember Nithya Raman and staff from the Department of Recreation and Parks invite Angelenos to an eco-centered Volunteer Day on Saturday, May 17th. Join with other volunteers to help restore this treasured nature space for future generations. At the event, volunteers will help out by removing invasive species, clearing brush to reduce fire hazards, and planting native vegetation to revitalize the ecosystem. Please RSVP to volunteer and meet at Fuller Gate to help at Runyon Canyon Volunteer Day on Saturday, May 17th at 9:00 a.m. For more information, visit cd4.lacity.gov/events. Join El Pueblo at the birthplace of Los Angeles to celebrate an icon of Mexican cinema and music on May 18th. With over 120 films to his name and 150 albums, Antonio Aguilar earned the title of Mexico's Horseman because he made Mexican charrería known around the world. Enjoy an afternoon of culture and community at Placita de Loris. This celebration of Aguilar, Dia del Charo, will include tamborasso performances and a traditional procession. Join El Pueblo to celebrate Antonio Aguilar at Dia del Charo on Sunday, May 18th, beginning at 11:00 a.m. and continuing until 5:00 p.m. For more information, visit elpueblo.lacity.gov/events. And that's a look at some things to do.
And that's all for this week. I'm Susan Huckle, and from all of us here at L.A. This Week, thank you so much for joining us. Remember that you can watch us online anytime at lacityview.org. We're also on Instagram, Facebook, X, and YouTube. See you next time for more L.A. This Week.
Did you know that the area of West Los Angeles used to be its own city known as the city of Sawtelle? I'm Chris Kiefer, the Senior Librarian here at the West Los Angeles Regional Branch Library, and I have with me here the original seal from the city of Sawtelle. Sawtelle was incorporated in 1906, and in 1922, the citizens voted to merge the city of Sawtelle with the city of Los Angeles. The last city clerk from the city of Sawtelle was a man named Lyndon Burzell. He went on to be a local businessman and involved in many community organizations. This library was built in 1956, and upon its one-year anniversary in 1957, Lyndon Burzell gifted the city of Sawtelle seal to the West L.A. Library so that we could have it here for the future, and it still works. The city of Sawtelle seal features the incorporation date, the motto "Progress," and in the middle, a sycamore tree, which used to be a local landmark here in the area, until unfortunately, it was burned down by some careless children and firecrackers.
it was burned down by some careless children and firecrackers.
I'm from Los Angeles City Council. Today is Friday, May 9th. We're going to take public comment in person in Council Chamber. Let's, we don't have a quorum yet, so let's just get started with presentations, and then as we get to quorum, we will move there. Before we do presentations, Councilwoman Park, do you have an announcement?
No.
No? No worries. I was told you wanted to speak before presentations.
Thank you, Council President. I just was not quite ready to go yet. Good morning.
We can come back to you.
It is my absolute pleasure to welcome some very special guests to our Council Chamber, the incredible students from the Archer School for Girls. They are joining us this morning from Brentwood, and these young women receive an education that allows them to discover their passions and realize their real potential. They learn to be critical thinkers and problem solvers who also take responsibility for their own well-being. Upon graduation, Archer girls are ethical leaders who are ready to take on the world's crises with courage, empathy, and integrity. Today, my staff is giving them a tour of City Hall and meeting with, they are scheduling meetings with various city departments, and hopefully what you see today will inspire some of you to run for office and to hopefully take over the helm of leading our city. So if you see any of them around City Hall today, please take a moment and say hello. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you and welcome. Okay, next, we're going to move to Councilwoman Hutt, who has a special presentation. Operation Hope and John Bray.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Park, I just felt proud to wear that hat for a moment, okay? So this says Build Back Pally. That's what we're doing. Today, I'm excited to welcome, welcome John Hope Bryant, founder and CEO of Operation Hope to Council Chambers. For too long, so many Angelenos have struggled to find financial freedom. Operation Hope combats this by giving our businesses the tools they need to succeed. Operation Hope is an organization that aims to find new and innovative ways to promote financial literacy, drive new business formation and growth, as well as influence policy that will help achieve financial equity across Los Angeles. They assist people of all ages, offering programs that provide their clients with financial education, one-on-one coaching, courses on credit score development, as well as pathways towards homeownership and entrepreneurship. Operation Hope operates under a powerful principle that economic security shouldn't be a solitary struggle of pulling yourself up by bootstraps, but rather by knowing how to navigate through financial systems to build security for your family, your business, and to build a legacy. Today, we don't just celebrate their incredible work of 33 years, but we also are talking about the three decades of giving unwavering support to people in Los Angeles. Let's give them a round of applause for 33 years. In recognition of this incredible milestone as National Small Business Week, I'm proud to announce that Council District 10 is partnering with Operation Hope to provide $1.2 million scholarship grants to small businesses as a crucial resource in training and technical assistance to Black-owned businesses in CD 10. This initiative is a key step to advancing our office's commitment to support small businesses and will be implemented through a partnership with Operation Hope 1 Million Black Business Program, offering entrepreneurs comprehensive, no-cost assistance at every stage. The program will offer things like access to experienced mentors, foster business growth, and long-term sustainability. Information sessions will provide essential tools to our businesses, building skills and terror learning one-on-one coaching. A special Spotify discount comes with this, where current business owners can access for just $1 six months of Spotify. The partnership offers our business owners a powerful step towards economic equity. I'm honored to join forces with Operation Hope to help CD 10 constituents thrive in their businesses. Thank you, and now I'd like to bring up the founder and CEO of Operation Hope, John Hope Bryant.
Good morning, Los Angeles. City Council, Mr. Price, Council President, members, thank you, Councilwoman Hutt, for your leadership. You are a force of nature and a light. As a gentleman, young man, a child, who came from 35th and Western, born in what was then Good Samaritan Hospital, doesn't exist anymore, here in downtown, who went to school here and grew up here in deep South Central, who had a dream that was embraced by then-Mayor Tom Bradley, who mentored me, took me on trade missions to South Korea, even though there was really no reason to have me there, other than I was irritating and wouldn't give up. But he believed in me. And I was invisible to most leaders, but I was visible to Tom Bradley. For those who don't know, he was the first Black man to be mayor of any major city in the United States for 20 years. Fast forward from that dream after the Rodney King riots in 1992, April 29th, 1992, we founded Operation Hope 33 years ago last week, this week. And we are now the largest financial literacy coaching organization in America. We have 1,500 offices in 42 states. We've invested $4.5 billion for homeownership, for small business ownership, for entrepreneurship in communities that are underserved. About 20% to 30% of our population is Latino and Spanish-speaking, our clients. Good base of that, most of that is African-American. We even serve poor whites in rural southern cities. We are everywhere, and we're the only nonprofit ever allowed to operate inside of a bank branch in U.S. history. We're also the largest Black male-founded, community-based nonprofit in U.S. history. $75 million a year annual budget. We've set federal policy for financial literacy. I've served three U.S. Presidents from both parties, and this is like coming back home. This literally is full circle. So to be able to stand with the councilwomen and to not just be talking about PhD, but PHD too, because when we leave here, we go to her district where we first started Operation Hope. I had an office in, well, no, no, La Mertre Park at the, what was in Marla Gibbs Community Center back then. Then we had, of course, an office on La Brea, 3721 South La Brea. To be able to come around back full circle and to now, today, provide through Shopify, which is our partner who's committed $190 million to Operation Hope to create 1 million Black businesses by 2030, we wanted to allocate $1.2 million of that to emerging Black businesses and Brown businesses in Los Angeles. This is not government money. This is not subsidized in any way. This is literally $1.2 million made through Operation Hope and Shopify to commit $25,000 each to make them e-commerce businesses, giving them a website, a domain name, a payment system, a delivery system, a Shopify account, as the councilwoman said, a business plan, get their credit score up, their debt down, their savings up, make them players, make them competitive. We can be the change we want to see in the world, but it requires somebody believing in you, just like Tom Bradley believed in me, just like you're opening the door right now for others or for us to help others. I'm going to yield the balance of my limited time to Lance Triggs, who's been with me for 30 years and president of programs, so he can say a couple of words about how this is full circle. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Councilwoman Hutt, for this proclamation and acknowledgement. As both the councilwoman and Chairman Bryant have mentioned, it is a full-circle moment. It's been a blessing for me being a part of that journey 30-something years ago. But the fact that not only we're here doing this partnership tied to supporting Black-owned businesses and Brown-owned businesses and others, the fact that we have 50 offices here in Los Angeles, we had a great grand opening earlier this week with Wells Fargo, who amongst other partners like Bank of America, Cathay Bank, and others, and U.S. Bank, were able to provide these hope-inside locations that are truly benefiting all members of our society, improving their financial well-being. So again, thank you all for this opportunity, this acknowledgement, and we'll continue to make our great city of Los Angeles proud.
I also wanted to note that we are working with the councilwomen and the mayor, and hopefully all of you, we have decided, not decided, we committed to Project Restore L.A., so we are part of the FEMA and Homeland Security Response Agency, one of our units. We're helping with the fire recovery, specifically homes damaged in Altadena. Again, this is our way of giving back to the city. We'll be here for five years with all of our partners. We will have 50 offices in Los Angeles over the next five years. Again, it's inspired by and triggered by the councilwomen's support and the mayor.
Well, thank you.
And we have members on the queue whenever you're ready.
Oh, okay, let's do the members.
Okay. Councilmember Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilwoman Hutt, thank you for bringing this remarkable organization to us today as we celebrate. Operation Hope, John, you've done a remarkable job over the years. And while your footprint has been wide and deep, I remember when it got started.
Yes.
On those infamous bus rides. Remember the bus tours that we used to do?
Yes.
Once a year or actually more frequently?
Yeah.
That helped you introduce a broader business community to opportunities in South L.A., obstacles and opportunities. And you've continued to build on that and grow that. So I just want to say thank you to you and the team, who have really demonstrated a unique ability locally, domestically, and internationally.
Yes.
To spread the importance of wealth and community. So thank you. Thanks for the efforts.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. The floor is yours.
Thank you. So we have a certificate from the City of Los Angeles, a certificate of recognition presented to John Hope Bryant, Chairman. On behalf of the City of Los Angeles and the 10th District, we proudly recognize and celebrate the 33rd anniversary of Operation Hope. The City commends Operation Hope for its steadfast dedication to economic empowerment and social justice. We further acknowledge the organization's impactful new partnership through the 1 Million Black Business Program. As part of this initiative, Operation Hope has committed $1.2 million in resources and training to support Black-owned businesses across Los Angeles. This investment reflects a profound commitment to fostering opportunity, equity, long-term growth for the city's diverse entrepreneurial community. With deep appreciation, we honor Operation Hope for its continual leadership and generous contributions that are helping to shape a stronger, more inclusive Los Angeles for generations. And I want you to know you're just in time, because we're getting ready for all our company. We have the FIFA coming to town, we have...
The Olympics.
We have the FIFA coming to town, we have the Olympics, we have our Basketball All-Star Weekend, we need our small businesses to be ready, and this will be an amazing driver. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much. God bless you.
While they're taking pictures, we're going to call the roll and move into the meeting before we move to presentations again. So Madam Clerk, if you would call the roll.
Yes, sir. Bloomingville, Harris, Dawson, Hernandez, Hutt, Gerardo, Lee, McCosker, Nazarian, Padilla, Hart, Price, Brahman, Rodriguez, O'Martinez, Jarwoslawski, 10 members present in the court, Mr. President.
Great. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes of May 7, 2025.
Okay, Councilmember Rodriguez moves. Councilmember Price seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Great. Councilmember Nazarian moves. Councilmember McCosker seconds, next.
Mr. President, shall I run through the agenda?
Yes, please.
Okay. Item 1 is an item notice for public hearing. Items 2 through 8 are items which public hearings have been held. For items 5 through 8, the committee reports have been submitted and available online under their respective council files. 10 votes are required for consideration, sir.
And Councilmember Nazarian, do you wish to, for what purpose do you rise?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to call 6 and 7 special for comments.
Okay, without objection. Madam Clerk, what else, what do we have in front of us now? 6 and 7 were called special for comments.
Yes, sir. So if council would like to vote, the items available are items 2 through 5 and 8, sir.
Okay. Those items are now before us. Any members on the queue? Seeing no members on the queue, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tally the votes.
10 ayes.
And there is a request to send item 5 forthwith, sir.
Without objection, so ordered. Next.
Next, the council may either go back to presentations or take public comments, sir.
Okay, we will go to presentations. Our next presentation is from Council District 14. We have...
Thank you, Councilmember.
Councilmember Gerardo, yes, the floor is yours.
Good morning, everyone. It is a tremendous honor to welcome and recognize the Los Angeles Master Corral today as they celebrate their 60th anniversary. For six decades, the Master Corral has been a cornerstone of the cultural and musical life of Los Angeles. They are the resident chorus of the iconic Walt Disney Concert Hall, a vital part of the fabric of downtown L.A., and it's a true privilege to have you in my district. They've built an international reputation for artistic excellence, performing a wide range of repertoire, from great classical choral works to bold contemporary pieces. Over the years, the Master Corral has commissioned more than 50 new works, showcasing its commitment to innovation and the future of choral music. Today, I'm joined by two leaders of this remarkable organization, Scott Altman, President and CEO, and Grant Gershon, Artistic Director. Under their leadership, the ensemble has reached new heights, including a Grammy Award win and performances that have captivated audience across the world. The Master Corral also enjoys a long and celebrated partnership with the L.A. Philharmonic, and this year, they will participate in the final season conducted by Gustavo Dudamel, a true milestone in Los Angeles music history. But their impact goes far beyond the concert stage. For more than 30 years, the Master Corral has run robust education and outreach programs, including the Youth Choir and Voices Within, impacting tens of thousands of students throughout L.A. County. They are deeply committed to accessibility and equity in the arts, bringing transformative musical experiences to communities across the region, and their dedication to excellence, education, and engagement has made them not just a performing arts organization, but a treasured cultural institution. So now, please enjoy this video celebrating the Los Angeles Master Corral remarkable journey over the past 60 years.
For 60 years, the Grammy Award-winning Los Angeles Master Corral has been the voice of L.A. and a standard bearer for choirs across the nation and around the world. Referred to by the L.A. Times as "the finest by far" major chorus in America, the L.A. Master Corral was founded in 1964, when the Dorothy Chandler Pavilion was completed. The ensemble became one of the Music Center's resident companies, presenting its own concert series and performing with the L.A. Philharmonic. The man who spearheaded this effort was the formidable conductor Roger Wagner, along with Z. Wayne Griffin and the Los Angeles Junior Chamber of Commerce, led by Marshall Rutter, who would continue to be a steadfast supporter and steward of the corral for six decades. Roger Wagner, who was known as a passionate showman, led the corral until 1985. He created a sound that could be both refined and robust, with an eclectic programming mix ranging from the Renaissance to the 20th century. In 1986, the baton was passed to Scottish conductor John Currie, who led the corral for five seasons. In 1991, Paul Solomonovich, who had been the corral's assistant conductor under his mentor Roger Wagner, assumed the role of music director. Under Solomonovich, the corral forged a symbiotic relationship with composer Morten Lauritsen, who created two of the most beloved choral works of our time for the corral, O Manium Mysterium and Lucet Terena. In 1998, the recording of those works led to the ensemble's first Grammy nomination. For Paul, choral music was a spiritual experience. During his tenure, he placed a renewed emphasis on the ancient traditions of plain chant and created phrasing that flowed freely, without bar lines. Paul also championed classical masterworks of Mozart, Beethoven, and Brahms, and he had a special affinity for French composer Maurice Durefle, whom Roger Wagner had put on the map in America. During this period, the corral also focused on the next generation of singers, creating their renowned high school choir festival. Since its inception, this longstanding education program has offered thousands of students an opportunity to raise their voices together and deepen their connection to the choral arts. The 2000s brought significant changes to the corral, including a spectacular new home and a visionary new leader. In 2001, Grant Gershon became the corral's fourth music director. Two years later, the corral's new home, the Walt Disney Concert Hall, Frank Gehry's masterpiece, opened its doors to the world. The acoustics of the new space were nothing short of miraculous, lifting the voices of the corral to new heights. For more than 20 years, Grant has widened the corral's musical boundaries with dozens of world premieres, along with invigorating interpretations of the classics. Armed with a sense of artistic adventure and innovation, Grant and the corral have helped to foster the current renaissance in choral music. They've premiered countless works by composers including John Adams, Steve Reich, Ellen Reid, David Lang, Billy Childs, and Swan Family artists-in-residence Rena Esmael, Sean Kirshner, and Eric Whitaker. Renewing its commitment to the future of choral singing, this season, the corral launched Youth Chorus L.A., a joyful, inclusive new program that connects young voices from all backgrounds. Youth Chorus L.A. provides a nurturing environment for musical growth and community connection, celebrating diverse voices and inspiring creativity in every young singer. Among the many highlights of the last 20 years, the corral has appeared on Lincoln Center's Great Performer Series, twice opened the prestigious Salzburg Festival, been personally invited by composer John Williams to sing on the final two Star Wars films, The Last Jedi and The Rise of Skywalker, received the Grammy Award for Best Choral Performance, and earlier this month, was featured on the Academy Awards Show broadcast live around the globe. Six decades of extraordinary music, an incredible foundation for the future of choral music from the world's most accomplished choir, your Los Angeles Master Corral.
Now, I would like to introduce Scott Altman, President and CEO of the Los Angeles Master Corral, to say a few words.
Thank you so very much, Councilwoman Gerardo. It's a pleasure. On behalf of everybody at the Los Angeles Master Corral, I'd like to thank this council and the City of Los Angeles for this tremendous honor. Today, it's my great pleasure to introduce to you my colleague, my partner at the Master Corral, our artistic director, Grant Gershon, who, under his leadership, the Master Corral has been a transformative arts and cultural institution representing Los Angeles around the world over the past many, many decades. Grant Gershon.
Thank you all so much. Thank you to the entire council, and especially thank you to Councilwoman Gerardo. We are really deeply honored by this recognition from the council. On behalf of myself, Scott, our entire staff, all of the artists of the L.A. Master Corral, and all of our supporters, thank you so much. We're so proud of this organization, so proud to be able to represent the excellence and aspirations of this city of Los Angeles, here at home and all around the world. We like to think of ourselves kind of as the L.A. Dodgers of choral music. That is, if the Dodgers would win the World Series every single year. But I will say, on a personal note, I'm an Angelito and a resident of the 14th District, and particularly in that context, I'm so grateful to the council for your ongoing support of education and the arts. We passionately believe that singing together creates the opportunity for us to truly listen to each other. You cannot sing a tune if you're not attuned to each other and feeling each other, hearing each other. That's what we model in the future, the idea of harmonizing our voices together. We're particularly focused right now on creating opportunities for young people to sing together. We feel like this is a vision of a brighter and more caring future that we can bring to the city and to the world. So again, on behalf of the L.A. Master Corral, thank you all so much. We look forward to our next 60 years of blending voices, of harmonizing our differences, and of truly creating a city of singers here in Los Angeles. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Grant, for your poetry and your art and sharing it with us. You know, we on council have different voices, and as much as we try, we are trying to harmonize so we can have effective leadership. So thank you for that, and we'll make sure that we'll get the other council members and know that it's time for Master Corral's 60th anniversary. And so with that, I'm going to present, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, a resolution recognizing your all's extraordinary contribution.
Thank you so much. Beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
As they're leaving, we'll have, Councilwoman Padilla has a special Cinco de Mayo presentation. The floor is yours.
All right, just let my folks trickle in, and then we'll get started. Okay, good morning, everyone. May is a very special month, right? It's the month of Mother's Day weekend that we're all getting ready for. We just had May Day, but of course, there is another very important day in May that I wanted to celebrate today, which is the unforgettable Cinco de Mayo. So today, for Cinco de Mayo, I'm proud to recognize very good friends of mine, an inspirational group known as Chicano Hollywood, a bold, unapologetic platform that is not only reshaping the narrative for Mexican-Americans and Latino in the entertainment industry, but also for reclaiming part of what I call "taking back Cinco de Mayo," taking back what people see as is Mexican-American holidays through authentic, transformative storytelling. Many don't realize that Cinco de Mayo is not Mexican Independence Day. That is celebrated in September, and it's not really a major holiday in Mexico, it's just another day. But it does commemorate a single battle, the Battle of Puebla, when an outnumbered and outgunned Mexican army defeated the mighty French forces on May 5, 1862. In retrospect, it's almost comical just how much attention it gets here in the States. Once upon a time here in the States, in the 1960s and 70s, young Chicanos, many who were students, workers, and organizers, began standing up against deep-rooted racism, inequality in schools, exploitation, exploitative labor conditions, and a lack of political representation. So they made it become a symbol of cultural pride and resistance, evolving into a time to reflect on the battles we've won, we fought and won, and a reminder that our community cannot be easily defeated, even when outnumbered. So over time, though that symbolism from the Chicano Student Movement has diluted, we know that it's become super-commercialized, and here is my contribution, excuse me, to trying to take away from the commercialization and into something more about storytelling about Mexican-Americans. And that is why today I wanted to introduce everyone in chamber and everybody who watches to Chicano Hollywood. It is a platform where you can get access both on social media, TV platforms, much better access to true, authentic Mexican-American stories. So today, you will hear more about it through the founder, Johnny Murillo. Chicano Hollywood is, as I mentioned, in multiple platforms, so I'll let you be the one to tell us more about that. But under Johnny's leadership, it's building a movement that empowers Mexican-Americans and Latino content creators to tell their own stories on their own terms with authenticity, dignity, and pride, and depending on who the creator is, a lot of times, lots of comedy. So from actors and writers to filmmakers, makeup artists, editors, producers, influencers, comedians, so much more, this is his way of elevating a new generation of talent that refuses to be sidelined. Their motto is clear: Chicano is a culture, not a color. It's a call to reclaim identity, visibility, and cultural space, not just in Hollywood, but across all platforms of storytelling influence. So today, we honor a collective of creatives, visionaries who have turned their lived experiences into narratives that challenge stereotypes, uplift our community, and breathe new life into the spirit of Cinco de Mayo, especially here locally in Los Angeles. So with that, I'm proud to introduce the founder of Chicano Hollywood, Johnny Murillo, a visionary leader, producer, and champion for our stories.
Thank you. Thank you for this honor of being here. I'll put that a little taller, I'm a little taller than the member, than councilmember. Thank you so much, council, for allowing us this space and time just to share who we are. We are a collective. There's not one particular person greater than the other in this group here, but instead, we are a collective of Chicano/Latino professionals in the entertainment business that are now striving hard and working hard to not only achieve greater levels for us, but also to pull those behind, underneath us as well. I say it all the time, that the days are over when Latinos step on each other to get to the other side. Latinos step on each other to get to the other side. Now we're going to lock arms and get to the top together. So what you see here is just a symbol of just the many, we have over 100,000 followers across the nation. Here in L.A., this is our base. This is our home. And it was out of this, a movie that we shot here right after COVID called Orchata with Oat Milk, that this movement started. And along the way, we have so many that have grown and connected with us, with branches across the nation. But just here behind me, I want to just point out a few of the people so you recognize who's here. Over to my left, you have Kayden Phoenix, who is reclaiming the position as Latina superheroes. Her mission is to create superheroes in anime and in live action so that our young girls and young men can see that we also can be a superhero. We don't have to just look at Marvel or DC. We have the Latina superheroes. That's Kayden's mission to build and grow. We also have Bernice from The Streets to the set. Her mission, pulling people off the streets and getting into production. And she's got them on shows with Hulu and herself as an actress as well, and other great platforms on Apple TV and so on, but taking them from gang members to now crew and talent in front and behind the cameras. We also have Blanca, who's way behind me over here. Her gift, her and her team's gift of Chola Vision, to take Shakespearean theatrical stories, Chicano them, and then put them on stage. And here again, you have, you know, members that normally might have been on a prison walk, but now they're on the stage, dressed even, and reclaiming the Shakespearean stories of Romeo and Juliet and many others. So the art and crafts that you see behind us, I also have, over to my right over here, you have the director and the producer of Orchata with Oat Milk, a new movie that came out that's just going viral. And it was on that set that we launched this movement. So here you have the new voices as directors and producers, Chris and Jeff Reyes. And you see also talent like Anthony here and Alex back over here. So they are just talents that are taking, you know, lead roles and apple. And as a matter of fact, if you drink Modelo, you're going to see his face all over the place, you know? He's got to throw your contract with them. So this is who we are. I'm looking around. Nacho back here. Can I say it? I'm gonna say it. I don't care. Three years ago, he hit me up, or actually, I was connected to him. They said, the warning they gave me was, well, he just got out of prison. He was a lifer. I said, I love that. Bring him on. I want him to be my production designer. And I didn't know, he didn't know what he was doing, but he shows up and he pretended like he knew what he was doing. And now, three years later, he's a production designer for great projects, big movies and art galleries, not just here in L.A., but in New York City as well. We have our Film Festival director, Francisco, who is also putting together a collective of short films, documentaries, feature films, and so on in our film festival this coming July. And that's all to celebrate our voice. I'm going to make sure I'm not missing anybody because I have two more speakers coming. But this is who we are. We're, I tell people all the time, that's a Chicano voice. We're not competing with other Latinos. We just want to get to where we at because we were here first. And we want to just strive hard, build. We aren't the same, we're not the peasants anymore that people look at, or the simpletons or anything like that. Who we are, we embody the spirit of Cinco de Mayo. When they rose up, that group rose up to fight the French, even though they were outnumbered, they didn't have the technology, they didn't have the training, but they fought hard and they made a historical stand. And that's what we're doing. It's time for us to take our place. So I have two more speakers that are going to come up. Kenneth? And then, was that it? Okay. Thank you so much. Okay, that was my words, right?
That's how you know Johnny is the leader. He's more about who's behind him and bringing them up as opposed to, you know, taking the spotlight. So thank you for those kind words. And yes, now we will go to Kenneth, Kenneth Castillo, a longtime Chicano director who has championed Chicano voices through film. He also mentors at-risk youth and up-and-coming Latino filmmakers using storytelling, as we've been mentioning, as a powerful tool for healing and empowerment in our communities. Welcome to the podium, Kenneth.
Thank you so much. I appreciate this acknowledgement you guys are giving Chicano Hollywood and in particular Johnny Murillo. My name is Kenneth Castillo. I've been a filmmaker for 25 years. I'm born and raised in Los Angeles in the small harbor town, the port of Los Angeles, Wilmington. I'm sure a lot of you have heard of it. But I really wish that Chicano Hollywood had been there at the beginning of my career. It was a very long and lonely journey. I wasn't a film school graduate. I didn't have representation. I didn't know what I was doing. I had to learn a lot on my own. And there were many organizations during the last 25 years that had come up with the goal of promoting and helping Latino talent. But I found that they all had a mission statement, but they didn't have a mission. And when Johnny reached out to me about four years ago, he said, the first thing that he sent to me was, hey, I'd like to talk to you about something. And having been a filmmaker for 20 years at that point, I'm like, that usually means someone wants something from me. But Johnny was very smart. He instead sent me an audio message, a voice message. And so I got to hear how genuine he was. And this was a man who didn't just have an idea, he had a plan. And I knew, and I felt confident that he could execute that plan. Everybody has ideas, but they're really cheap unless you can actually make something happen. So I took that meeting and I talked to him and I fell in love with him. I fell in love with you that day, four years ago. And he had a different perspective. And his ideas were, we need to elevate all of us together. We need to put everyone together. We need to utilize our audience because our audience will support our storytelling if we can get it out. And so that was a mission that I really wanted to be a part of. And I've watched Chicano Hollywood grow. It's not just been about the writers, directors, and the actors. He's had workshops to teach people how to be grips. He's had partnerships with Quijote Studios, which is huge, where they offered workshops on how to grip, how to light, how to be on set. His conference Elevate has been two years. I've made more connections in those two conferences than I've ever had in any of the other organizations that are out there. But it's been a real honor of me to be here when he invited me and gave me at least, what was it, 10 hours of notice that we were going to be speaking? Okay. But it also reminds me of the first Elevate conference five days before. And he said, listen, Ken, you know, my wife and my daughters said that I shouldn't do the Legends panel and that you should do it. And I said, okay, cool. Who's on it? He's all, it's no big deal. And I said, no, that's fine. Who's on it? He's all, Everett James Olmos, Emilio Rivera, Luis Guzman. I go, yeah, sure, no problem. Give me five days' notice and I'll talk to these legends. But I would always come to anything that he asked me to because of his genuineness, his authenticity, and more importantly, his honesty. And it's very hard to find people in this town who will do something and not want anything in return. His gift is his humility, but also his execution of the things that he wants to bring to fruition. So I really, it really means a lot to me that you're acknowledging not just Chicano Hollywood, but Johnny Murillo. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Kenneth. Next, we are going, I want everybody to please join me in welcoming Betania Murillo, a recent Assouza Pacific University graduate in film and a creative director of Chicano Hollywood Musica, where she uplifts Latino artists and helps shape the next generation of cultural change makers through music and media. Welcome.
Hi, good morning, everyone. Thank you so much to Councilwoman Padilla. Your support has always just been so consistent and genuine, and it really does mean the world to us. Thank you, your team, for making today happen. Today is really special, not only getting to celebrate what Chicano Hollywood means to us as a movement, but today I get to celebrate what it means to us as a family business and really how far we've come. So much of our Elevate planning sessions is birthed from our kitchen table and our living room. And so we are really a Los Angeles small business. And it's so special to us to really be acknowledged by a city that means the world to us and births such great community. But I think about the conferences that we have annually, and it's about 500-plus people. And they walk away from those conferences saying, this doesn't feel like a normal Hollywood event. This feels like family. And that's birthed really just out of our love and our family giving right back into our community. And so I'm so thankful for how much our family has grown and the people behind me and the way that we come at the problem of Latino representation from every angle. And there's so much more work to be done. And so we thank you for this acknowledgement. And yeah, we're ready to keep working. Thank you.
Okay, so thank you to all the honorees joining us today. I know that this is a big network, but thank you for those of you who came. So from the filmmakers to the comedians to the digital content creators, thank you all for using this platform to, as I mentioned, redefine the representation of how we talk about the Mexican-American stories. So on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, it is my honor to present you with this certificate of recognition on behalf of the entire city of Los Angeles with all of our signatures.
And Councilwoman, we have a few members on the queue as well, if you're ready for that. Okay, so we'll start with Councilmember Price, followed by Councilmember Rodriguez. Okay, Councilmember Rodriguez, followed by Councilmember Hurdado.
Come on, Corrin, how are you taking a pass on this one? Councilmember Padilla, thank you for being the true Chicana in bringing in this presentation. It's really wonderful to have you all here. And the perfect correlation around Cinco de Mayo, because it was a fight of what was perceived as insurmountable to overcome. And what you all have collectively done is helped to make space and force space in an environment that has always attempted to keep us out. So I want to thank you for that. You know, recently, a friend of mine just finished going to Broadway to see Josefine perform on Broadway, Real Women Have Curves. And it is a first, I think, for our community to really take that space, aside from, of course, Lin-Manuel Miranda and other Latinos that have been prominently in that space. But to have a Chicana in there doing that work, you all are making space at a time where politically, we have continued to see this silencing of our community, this disparagement of our community, or this lack of respect for the fact that our voices should be represented by ourselves, that we are capable of leading diverse communities. You all are helping to make that space and force that conversation in a Hollywood that has historically never accepted or acknowledged us. So I want to thank you for that. We are more than just the gang stories. We are so much more than how we have been portrayed. And I want to thank you all for being that collective force to make that change. So thank you for doing it. Thank you for being unapologetically you. But thank you, Ms. Padilla, for helping to continue to bring these types of presentations forward, to being unrelenting in that Chicano pride, because we're taking space and we ain't leaving. So thank you for that.
Councilwoman Hurdado, followed by Councilmember McCosker.
Thank you, Councilmember Padilla, for honoring Chicano Hollywood. You know, I'm born and raised Highland Park, and Chicano art is in the heart of my district. I grew up with it. You know, we helped paint murals at our schools growing up. And so I appreciate Councilmember Padilla for making sure that Chicanos aren't just an asterisk in Hollywood and that we're taking up space and that she's giving you that space and making sure you got your shine on here in city council. Because like you said, you're not in the background, you're out here leading. So thank you so much for the work that you're doing. We love small businesses like yours that are able to succeed and push back on the stereotypes and show L.A. who we really are, which is a city that is multicultural, multiracial, multi-ethnic, but that Chicano community has so much to offer us and so much richness and is at the forefront, really, of L.A. identity. So thank you, Councilmember Padilla and Chicano Hollywood.
Hey, thank you so much. I thought this was just awesome. When you guys are looking for your next superhero to feature, look no further than Imelda Padilla, our very own superhero. It was just so great. You exude so much, so much of a family, so much of a movement. It was just really, really inspiring to hear you speak. I appreciate you very much. I wanted to say to Kenneth, I represent Wilmington, so you're a son of the 1-5. I'm so glad you are here. I also wanted to just tell you something, just to put in the back of your minds. I represent the Harbor area. And right at that intersection of San Pedro and Wilmington, where the Vincent Thomas Bridge is, there was a community, when my dad was a kid, that was called Mexican Hollywood. It was actually called Mexican Hollywood. It was a Latino community that, like so many stories in L.A., got wiped out by a development, the bridge. And in the coming weeks, we're going to be recognizing Mexican Hollywood down in San Pedro. And it's actually the folks that remember, yeah, please, Imelda, I want you to be there. Because the older generation, like my father's generation, my father grew up in something called Barton Hill neighborhood, and that's where he lived. And a lot of his contemporaries came together and said, we can't pass away and let this be forgotten. And it's very inspirational to me, just as you are inspirational to me. So I also appreciate taking back the holiday. As an Irish-American, I'd like to take back St. Patrick's Day, so I'm going to watch you guys. So thank you and God bless you guys.
Thank you. Congratulations again, and back to you, Councilwoman.
Just a little point of personal privilege within the crowd, I do have to give a shout out to Mr. Jeff Reyes here, Echoes World, because he's my videographer. If you followed my campaign, this is the guy that did the "Get closer!" This is the guy who told my story well in less than 90 seconds. Also, I want to make sure everybody writes it down. Where did it start? How did y'all come together? The film is Orchata with Oat Milk. If you pay attention closely, you will see that it was filmed during that little era between my time at the county and running for office, that I lost my mind after COVID and said I wanted to be a writer. You will see me in that film. And also, lastly, Councilmember Rodriguez, they do host their conference at the Quijote Theater in your district, so we'll invite you next time. All right, thank you all again. And happy Cinco de Mayo, everyone. And happy Mother's Day, everyone, too.
All right, happy Cinco de Mayo. Our next presentation will be led by Councilmember McCosker, honoring Croatian-American heritage. So we'll make that transition. Mr. McCosker, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. Dobro jutro, dobro jutro. Once again, this is time for us to come together and celebrate the beginning of Croatian Heritage Month. I have the distinct honor of being joined by Council General of the Republic of Croatia in Los Angeles, Renee Peja, and our esteemed guests from the 1-5, from the Croatian-American Club, community members. And today, we kick off this month celebrating Croatia's independence and their heritage and their culture. For those unfamiliar with the natural beauty and culture of Croatia, I wanted to present a video highlighting the beauty of this country that I had a chance with a delegation from the city to visit just this past year. So let's see this beautiful video.
You have to see this video.
You have to see this video.
Beautiful, beautiful. For you football fans, you probably noticed a lot of very famous athletes in that video. Very accomplished country in sports and a little sports crazy, too. And some of those shots were of Split, one of our sister cities. And the country is as beautiful as you just saw. But here, we are graced once again by the presence of the Council General. And I want to introduce, for a few words, Renee Pae.
Thank you so much, Honorable Council President, Honorable Council Members, Honorable Councilwoman McCosker. It is such an honor and a privilege standing here in front of you, speaking once again on the occasion of Croatian-American Heritage Month. This is only the second time we're celebrating the entire Croatian month, which grew from a week, which in turn used to be just a day. However, I feel it has grown to be even more than that, especially looking at the last year. We have celebrated numerous occasions together. Just in the past year, since last May, we had the honor of welcoming Croatian Prime Minister here. We celebrated 30 years of the sister-city relationship between Los Angeles and Split. We honored one of your own, the former Ambassador to Croatia, Her Excellency Natalie Reyes. And we were very honored that the Councilwoman McCosker and different city officials visited Croatia and signed the agreement, which made Croatia one of the first countries to sign a Croatia House for the Olympics in San Pedro. I'm truly in awe of what we have managed to accomplish together in only a year. And I would like to wholeheartedly thank Councilmember McCosker and his team, as well as the Council, for being such cherished partners and friends. It's no wonder I feel very much at home here before this esteemed body, but also in the city that has been home to the Croatian community for generations, for more than 30,000 of them, who in turn made this great city what it is today with their invaluable contributions to its fishing and canning industries, shipbuilding, sports, medicine, education, and so much more. This year is also a very significant year for Croatia because we're celebrating 1,100 years of Croatian Kingdom, when King Tomislav, who united Croatia and made it one country and one people, was crowned. We are also celebrating 30 years since operations Flash and Storm that liberated our country and solidified our independence and freedom. A big part in that was played by the United States, our long-term friend and ally. Today, as proud members of the EU and NATO, we are immensely grateful to the U.S. for their help and support in the most trying of times. We are also forever indebted to the Croatian community here and throughout the U.S., which is the strongest bond between our two countries. We are very excited for the future. With all the major global sporting events coming to L.A., such as FIFA World Cup, as well as the 2028 Olympic and Paralympic Games, Croatia, as a small country for great sports accomplishments, as we like to call it, is very excited and looking forward to deepening our friendship and cooperation in preparation and participation at the Olympics and the World Cup. In conclusion, and on a more personal note, I would like to wholeheartedly thank you all and Councilwoman McCosker and his team, in particular, for all their help and support and for the true friendship that was formed throughout the years. Allow me also to thank our small but mighty organizing committee, who really do a wonderful job in organizing some 10-plus events for Croatian-American Heritage Month. Please join us for all the events. They're all posted at the consulate's social media and all the Croatian clubs here. And come and experience rich Croatian culture and heritage, food and wine. We hope to see you there, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, Council General. One of the really important spots for Croatian heritage and culture is in San Pedro, at the Croatian-American Club on 9th Street. We have lots of events there. And I want to introduce the president of the club, Frane Jokovic. Frane.
Good morning, Council President and esteemed Council Members representing the great city of Los Angeles. It is with a great pleasure and honor that I stand at this podium today, speaking on behalf of the Croatian community, to share some insights into the many contributions Croatians have made to the City of Los Angeles. We can begin with the fishing industry in San Pedro, which played a vital role during the World War II by feeding, helping to feed our soldiers overseas. Croatian workers were also active in the shipyards, refitting military vessels and returning them to service. As longshoremen, they loaded and unloaded essential goods, ensuring supplies reached the markets and sustained the economy. Today, many Croatians own businesses, thrive, particularly in the field of underground construction, continuing a tradition of hard work and innovation. Thanks to the dedicated men and women and the opportunities provided this great city, our community has prospered. Many Croatians' families have been able to live the American dream. And so for that, we are all deeply grateful to the City of Los Angeles. As you may know, we will be celebrating our Croatian Independence Day on May 25. And we warmly invite you to join us at the Croatian-American Club in San Pedro to enjoy our traditional foods, music, and dances. I would like to take this opportunity to thank our friend and Councilman, Tim McCosker, as well as our board member, Jag Baric, who have both been instrumental in making it possible to celebrate a month of Croatian heritage events in Los Angeles. Most importantly, I want to acknowledge our Council General of Croatia, Renee Pae, who has played a key role in organizing many of the activities taking place this month. Thank you to all for giving us this honor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Frane. Thank you, Frane. One of the things that Frane referred to was feeding sailors overseas. If you think about tuna fish in a can, that was Croatian-Americans out of San Pedro. That was innovated right there. They were the center of the tuna fishing industry and the canners. But no celebration of Croatian Heritage Month kickoff would be complete without some traditional Croatian music. And we have a very famous performer from Croatia right here in our presence, Roko Blajević, is going to perform for us now. Roko. While he's setting up, I will also say that the Croatians brought us the tie. We're going to forgive them for that one. The tuna in a can sort of replaced that. So now we like him again. Roko.
One, two, one, two. Hello, everybody. Honorable Council President, honorable Council Members, esteemed guests, my dear friends and beautiful representatives of Croatian community. Thank you for having me. For the second year in a row, I'll be doing two songs from Delmatinsk Apisma genre, which is basically music from the region of Croatia where I grew up at, which is Dalmatia. You could see Split on that video. That's my hometown. I was heavily influenced and my artistry was heavily influenced by Delmatinsk Apisma. So without further ado, I hope you enjoy this. Thank you. This next song is by the same artist. His name is Oliver Dragojevic. All my Croatian fellows know him very well or knew him very well. Anyways, I hope you enjoy it. It's called "Dva Putsa Numra." Thank you all so very much.
Members, the relationship between the Croatian-American community and City Hall only deepens, and we have so many great things in our future. We have this wonderful month we're going to celebrate together. I predict that next year, San Pedro and the Harbor area will be overtaken with the GURB and the uniforms when the World Cup is on, right? And then in two years, two years beyond that, we will have Croatia House in San Pedro. So thank you, Council General. Thank you to all you beautiful folks from the community who are only deepening the relationship of Croatian-Americans and the country of Croatia, the Republic of Croatia, with the United States and the City of Los Angeles. Members, I have a certificate to present. Oh, it's right here. Oh, thank you, Mario. On behalf of the City of Los Angeles and the 1-5, we present to this fantastic group who have organized Croatian-American Heritage Month for the second year. We thank you, and we wish you well and great things in our future together.
Wonderful, wonderful. Thank you. Thank you so much for that wonderful presentation and for bringing Croatian-American heritage right here to City Hall. So next, we're going to have another presentation. Councilmember Park, you can have the floor.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Council President, and good morning, colleagues. Council General Paulina Kapusinka is our distinguished Council General representing nations of the European Union. Happy Euro- Happy European Union Day, colleagues. It is my honor to welcome everyone to City Hall this morning, and it's wonderful to spend the day in celebrating our friends and allies from across the Atlantic. This day really is an opportunity to celebrate and highlight the shared values that continue to unite Los Angeles and the EU: peace, democracy, cooperation, and human dignity. This is especially important as Europe just yesterday celebrated the 80th anniversary of Victory in Europe Day, when the Allies of World War II defeated hate, fascism, totalitarianism, and illiberalism in Europe. Modern European integration and the various agreements and treaties which ultimately led to the creation of the EU were begun in the aftermath of this era with one goal in mind: to prevent the regular continent-wide conflicts that had occurred in Europe in the decades and centuries predating World War II. The peace and freedom of Europe is a testament to this work. As the Chair of Trade, Travel, and Tourism for one of the most globally connected cities in the world and representing a district where most of the European consulate offices are located, I am also very proud of the strong relationship that Los Angeles shares with the EU. L.A. remains steadfast in maintaining the strong relationship in the midst of political and economic uncertainty at the federal level. I'm grateful for the many European consulates that call Los Angeles home and for the cultural vibrancy they bring to our city. As we prepare to welcome the world for events like the 2026 World Cup and the 2028 Olympics, we look forward to deepening our partnership with our European friends and continuing to promote mutual understanding and exchange. So on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, I wish you a wonderful European Union Day, and thank you so much for your friendship and your commitment to building a prosperous, united, and peaceful world. So it is my pleasure on behalf of the city of Los Angeles to have you here in Council Chambers and to welcome you all in Los Angeles.
Okay, and Councilmember Pedia, you want to add something to this announcement?
Yeah, I do. What a fun presentation. Thank you so much, Councilmember Price. I didn't know this one was on the queue. You know, I was 15 years old when I got the opportunity to first go to Europe. It was part of the AP European class curriculum, and you know, we would learn about the EU as the modern thing in European history, and it was something that I very much admired. The way the EU told themselves, "We're stronger when we immerse our commerce, our capital, and our labor," totally shows to be completely accurate. And just months before our last presidential election, I found myself in rooms with a lot of different people from Mexico, where we were ready to really talk about how the EU did commerce, capital, and labor, and we wanted to make sure that our next round of NAFTA, unlike the EU, would incorporate labor. We have so much to learn from you. We totally, I totally wish you continued success, and please know that there are other global, you know, trade groups that are looking to your success, and hopefully we can get our act together out here with the North American Free Trade Agreement based on your best practices. Congratulations again.
Thank you. Okay. Maybe, and then Councilmember Park has another presentation. You want to go straight to that? Okay, Councilwoman Park, the floor is yours.
All right. Thank you, Council President, once again. Today, I am incredibly excited and honored to get to be joined by three young men from the Pacific Palisades who have stepped up for their community in extraordinary ways. Jake Yun and Dylan Fulmer are both students at Harvard Westlake, and Mason Cohen is a student at Windward. These young men are lifelong friends. They grew up in the Palisades, spending their childhoods riding bikes through the canyons and watching the annual Fourth of July parade. But in the early days after the Palisades fire, it wasn't just homes that were gone. Our local business corridor, block after block, was reduced to ash. Storefronts where families gathered, where kids grabbed snacks after school, where friends met for frozen yogurt and pizza on Friday night, were just all gone. The heart of our Palisades, those familiar places that defined both our routines and our memories, was hollowed out. And it's in that moment, when most adults were still trying to process the scale of the loss, three teenagers joined together and decided to act. Despite the fire devastating their community and destroying their homes, they didn't just grieve the loss, they got to work. These three remarkable young men created Build Back Palley, a grassroots effort to help local businesses recover and preserve the heart of the Palisades. In just a few short months, they have raised over $100,000 and started a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, with every dollar going directly back to the small business owners who lost everything in the Palisades. What they're doing isn't just symbolic, it's real help, it's real commitment, and real impact. These are teenagers who are showing up and showing us what it means to lead, without a title, without a job description, and without being asked. Their organization is now fiscally sponsored under legacy global programs to ensure transparency and proper use of their funds. They've made it clear, this isn't about recognition, it's about rebuilding the place they call home, and doing it with heart, integrity, and action. Jake, Dylan, Mason, your work is inspiring, your leadership is authentic, and on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, I want to thank you for what you're doing to bring the Palisades back. We have a great video that we'd like to share with you now.
His grandmother's dining table is 16-year-old Dylan Fulmer's new workstation.
Yep, here's some photos.
He and his two best friends, Jake Yun and Mason Cohen, are writing a love letter to their hometown of Pacific Palisades.
When we're not doing school and sports, this is what we're doing.
Their friendship began here as kindergartners at the village school. Ever since then, they've been inseparable, from trick-or-treating to dining adventures and sleepovers.
We used to hang out and play basketball, go surfing a lot, and then come over to my house and swim in my pool.
This is that pool and basketball hoop at Jake's house now. He and Mason are staying in rentals. Dylan is at his grandparents' home. Their elementary school is also a pile of rubble.
It was very devastating to see all these places that we've loved growing up all burned down, but then again, I think for me, it was also inspiring as we, this really sparked us to want to help out our community and rebuild.
So they decided to turn their sadness into action and did what teenagers do best: jump on social media.
Can you post on our Instagram of the photos you took?
Yeah.
Through their online outreach, they got donations and found sponsors. With the help of their parents, the three set up a nonprofit, Build Back Palley, where 100% of proceeds will go to businesses in the Palisades.
All right, thank you so much. I would love to introduce you now to Jake Yun. Jake, come on up and say a few words.
Hello, everybody. I hope you are all doing great right now. My name is Jake Yun, and I am a lifelong resident of Pacific Palisades. I also founded Build Back Palley with my great friends over here. After the recent fires in January, we lost our homes, we lost our community, and we lost our local businesses. In the aftermath of the fires, me and my friends, Mason Cohen and Dylan Fulmer, created a grassroots operation to help restore the Palisades' spark and identity, which is most important to us. We recognize that local businesses are the cornerstone for us to rebuild as best and as fast as possible. I would just like to say thank you for all your time and recognition for us, and we look forward to working together to help Build Back Palley better than ever. Thank you.
All right, yes, great. All right, Dylan Fulmer, come on up and say a few words.
Hi, I'm Dylan Fulmer, and I'll be talking about the current state of Build Back Palley. Since just starting a little over three and a half months ago, we have raised over $100,000 and counting as a 501(c)(3). Build Back Palley is currently partnered with numerous businesses that are looking to rebuild in the Palisades, as well as actively searching for more businesses to support, as we knew those were the, as we know those are the cornerstones of what made the Palisades so special. As our support grew, we've been fortunate to have been featured on multiple news channels such as AP News, KCAL, KTLA, as well as multiple radio stations and newspapers. These features playing a key role in the funds we have raised. This summer, we are planning on hosting multiple local fundraising events as we continue to do our part in rebuilding. Thank you.
All right, fantastic. Mason Cohen, why don't you come up and say a few words next?
First, I would like to thank Tracy Park for her incredible leadership throughout this whole process. She's really meant a lot to us in rebuilding. And our vision for the future is to rebuild the Palisades to have the same small-town feel and local community that we loved to grow up in for the next generation of kids and children to have the same great experience we have had. And this starts with rebuilding the local businesses that made our community so special, and that's truly the heart of our community. So with your help, we'll rebuild, restore, and revive to recreate a better future for the Palisades. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So therefore, colleagues, I would like to take a moment and present these certificates. Jake, Dylan, there you go. All right. So I wanted to present these recognitions to these remarkable young men for their incredible vision, their dedication, and their sense of service to our community. Their small grassroots organization is actually informing the vision that we are building into our plans to fully restore this incredible part of our city. So again, I want to say thank you to Jake and Dylan and Mason and their very proud, incredible parents for all of the very hard work. It's wonderful to have you with us today in Council Chambers. I know you all are getting the morning off of school, so we're going to say goodbye and let you get back to it, but I just am so incredibly proud of these young people who are stepping up to lead in remarkable ways. Thank you, and on behalf of a very grateful council district and city of Los Angeles, it is an honor to have you here with us today. Thank you. Thank you, Council President.
We have a member on the queue, Councilwoman Rodriguez.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Park. I'll give you guys a minute to take your photos real quick. First, the paparazzi. So Jake, Mason, Dylan, thank you so much for exhibiting what I know young people are capable of across our entire city. You are the very resilient part of what makes Los Angeles really who we are, and I know your parents are incredibly proud watching you be honored here today, but I'm sure it's just a microcosm of what you will accomplish in the rest of your lives. But I want to thank you for, in the midst of all of this devastation, this is really the spirit of the story of the Palisades, of how you all have come together. You've seen the need, and you're filling the need, and of course, doing it in collaboration with one of our, one of my great colleague, Ms. Park, who has been an incredible face of strength, along with so many community members, that in the wake of such incredible tragedy, continue to daylight the most remarkable comeback. And that's what I'm just so awestruck by, that you all just, obviously, your incredible friendship in history, and you know, I think about my, I have two of my best friends from kindergarten, so I understand that very tight-knit sense of friendship that you all have, but that you're doing this together for your community is really remarkable. And doing so frankly, again, the focus on the small businesses and the hometown feel of what makes the Palisades the Palisades. So often, it's the business community that's left to fend for themselves, and you all identifying that as your focus is part of the economic recovery that is really important, but part of how the community shows its true collaboration and partnership to supporting those small business owners that is going to help create that sense, you know, bring back that unique sense of community that you had there. It's a beautiful community in Los Angeles, and the fact that you all came together to focus on that part of it is really remarkable, and I'm just incredibly grateful for it. But again, for me, all you do is underscore what I know is true of young people, which so often leadership dismisses. This is what you all are capable of doing, and it's really remarkable and exciting for me to see that you all are doing it for your neighborhood in the wake of such tragedy, and I know the impact and the trauma that it has caused, but you took that and you turned it into something productive. And for that, just congratulations, my hat's off to you, and happy to support you all with your next fundraising effort.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rodriguez, thank you, Councilmember Park, for the wonderful presentation.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next, I believe we have items six and seven, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. President. Six and seven was called special by Councilwoman Nazarian.
Okay, those items are now before us, and I'd like to offer the floor to Councilmember Nazarian.
Thank you, Council President. 16 or more so, 18 years ago, when I was an Assembly staffer, I worked on the original version of California's Film and Television Production Tax Credit, and at that time, it was extremely difficult to push something up the hill where there was so much resistance from other parts of the state. And so it took a lot of determination, 2006, '07, to build it up, to finally put it in the budget in 2009, when there was a deal struck between Republicans and Democrats to put an economic incentive in that'll support the industry. Since 2009, the tax credit has generated $26 billion of economic activity in this state and saved nearly 200,000 jobs. Every dollar of that tax credit generates more than $24 of economic activity. Let me repeat that again. Every dollar of that tax credit generates more than $24 of economic activity and actually increases state and local tax revenue by 7% on every dollar. But the challenge of foreign competition in a global market has grown exponentially. We're losing jobs, not just to other states, but to other countries. I'm not talking about the jobs of movie stars and studio executives, I'm talking about the blue-collar jobs, the carpenters, the grips, electricians, camera operators, and then the local businesses that are impacted, like caterers, flower shops, dry cleaners, and many other specialty businesses that have created a cottage village around the industry itself, be given the expertise that have been developed over a century operating in this area. These are the jobs that L.A. families and their neighborhoods depend on. Last week, the council approved my motion to keep Hollywood home by streamlining the permitting process for filming in L.A. We're going to turn the red tape to a red carpet for film crews and our streets, for film crews on our streets and our city property. Today, I'm asking for your vote on my resolution. Today, I'm asking for your vote on my resolutions in support of two state measures. Assembly Bill 1138 and Senate Bill 630 will expand access to the film and television tax credit so more small and independent producers and creators of shorter-form content can participate. Let's pass these measures in Sacramento. Let's enact Governor Newsom's expansion of the state tax credit, and let's pressure Washington, DC to create a federal tax credit for motion picture production. Other countries support their film industries. We need to do the same. Colleagues, please join me in keeping Hollywood home, and I ask for an "I" vote on items six and seven respectfully.
Great. Thank you so much, Mr. Nazarian. I strongly agree with you. In fact, I was proud to be, to support that first tax credit and to be a co-author of the next one, and going back and forth with the governor on it through the Budget Committee. I think it's really critical for our area, something I've been involved with for a long time as well. So let's open the roll on this important item. Close the roll. Tally the votes.
Ten ayes.
Okay, that is agreed. Congratulations. Yes, Mr. Nazarian.
If you don't mind, forthwith, please, on this measure.
Without objection, forthwith.
Councilmember forthwith on both six and seven, sir?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, now we move to public comment. If you could read the instructions and call the names.
To people providing public comment, when it is your turn to speak, please state whether you'd like to speak to today's agenda item, which is item number one. You will have one minute for the item open for public comment. We will tell you when your time is up. When speaking to the agenda item, you must be on topic. If you're not on topic, if we cannot tell whether you're on topic, you will get one brief warning from me or the president. At that point, you need to get immediately and clearly on topic. If you do not do so, or you again stray off topic, you will forfeit the rest of your speaking time, and we will move on to the next speaker. Again, the item open for public comment today is item number one. Members of the public may also speak for up to one minute for general public comment, which will be held during general public comment. Members of the public may speak to any of the items or anything else in the subject matter jurisdiction.
Great. Can we call the names?
I will now call names for public comment. Lisandro Presa, Maria Gonzalez, Herbert Lopez, Stacy Segarra, Maria Gonzalez, Maria Santos, Leslie Mesa.
And again, if you heard your name, you can come up and line up on the left side, House left, Stage right, and go ahead and you can continue to read some names. And whoever's next can get ready to speak. Ms. Garbouler, you have the floor. I assume you want one minute for the item and one for general public comment. Go ahead.
You got it, Bob. Thank you. So item one is regarding revenue bonds for a so-called affordable housing project in Balboa. Now, let me explain what I like about this project. This project is repurposing office space for housing. I had a meeting with Councilmember Rahm in a while back. She said that kind of rehab is expensive and impossible, but she is moving this motion to do just that. So I'm really glad for that. However, I have issues with Capstone Equities, whose mission, per their website, is to seek out superior market returns in undervalued real estate assets. They're also based in New York. I'm wondering why we couldn't find a nonprofit developer that's local to give this $65 million bond for, or also why it couldn't be mortgage revenue bonds, because homeowners are far less likely to become homeless than renters. I'll now go into general public comment. So we have a budget memo from the DOT suggesting that we lay off 460 crossing guards and to replace those guards with traffic officers on the corners. Now, they wouldn't be able to deploy nearly as many traffic officers. They wouldn't have 460 of them. That would reduce the number of corners served. It would also not be the friendly familiar faces that the crossing guards are on these corners. Also, it's not going to save the city money. Many traffic officers end up earning more in overtime than their base salary, so if you're not going to hire more traffic officers, which would also be more expensive, this is just going to end up costing you more in overtime. And you would also likely have to collaborate with LAUSD for an probably ineffective volunteer program, or if they wanted to implement a paid program legally per the state, they could recoup any expenses associated with that from traffic fines. So this is really an expensive, bad proposal. Save the crossing guard program, please.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Maria Torres. Comentario público, y necesito traductor.
Yeah, my name is Maria Torres, and I'm going to do general public comment.
Okay, you have one minute.
Torres. Estamos, he trabajado para Fly and Food por nueve años.
Yeah, my name is Maria Torres. I've been working for Flying Food Group for nine years.
Por un sueldo de 20.73 por hora, como lavaplatos y trabajo en el turno de la noche.
Winning $20.73 an hour, working the night shift as a dishwasher.
La compañía empaca comida para vuelos internacionales en LAX.
And a company packages food for international flights in LAX.
Para mí, el sueldo olímpico me ayudaría para poder ayudar a mi familia en mi país.
And for me, the Olympic wage would help me support my family and my country.
Con lo que gano trabajando en Fly and Food Group, me estoy ahogando.
And with what I earn working for Flying Food Group, I am truly drowning.
No sé cómo voy a poder seguir pagando mi renta porque la renta en este año me ha subido 300 dólares más por mes.
And I don't know how I'm going to be able to pay the rent, because my rent this year has gone up to $300 a month.
También los billes, la canasta básica, es mucho dinero para nosotros. Con 20.73 y segu, podemos decir, no podemos sobrevivir en Los Ángeles.
And also adding to that my bills and groceries, the wage that I make, $20.73 an hour, is not going to be enough for me to be able to live here in Los Angeles.
Necesitamos que pasen esta ley porque, porque interviniendo en familia, invirtiendo en familias trabajadoras como la mía, ayuda a la economía.
We need to approve of this ordinance, because investing in working families such as mine would actually help our economy.
Y menos de nosotros vamos a quedar sin hogar en la calle. Muchas gracias. Esperamos que su voto sea así.
So that all of us don't have to end up on the street. So thank you so much. We hope that you will vote yes.
Gracias. Next speaker.
Buenas tardes. A deseo traductor.
Si, adelante.
Mi nombre es Esperanza Montes. Trabajo para la compañía de Fly and Food por más de cinco años.
My name is Esperanza Montes, and I've been working for Flying Food for more than five years.
Donde gano a 20.73 por hora cuando tengo un esposo que es diabético y no trabaja.
Winning $20.73 an hour when I have a diabetic husband who does not work.
Una nieta bajo mi cuidado, no dependo de ninguna ayuda.
And a grandchild under my care, and I don't depend on anybody else's help.
Pago de renta 3,000 dólares.
And I pay $3,000 in rent.
Por lo cual estoy aquí para pedir la intervención de ustedes.
And that is why I am here to ask for your intervention.
Para que Fly and Food nos dé un sueldo digno.
So that Flying Food can give us a just wage.
Y que pasen el sueldo de los juegos olímpicos.
And to approve of the Olympic wage.
Gracias a todos por escucharme.
And thank you to all for listening to me.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Speaker, would you like to speak to the item, or?
Public comment, general public comment.
You have one minute.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Lisandro Presa. I work at LAX, and I'm a proud member of Unite Here Local 11. For over two years, I've been showing up here, missing work, pleading with you not to delay the Olympic wage. This year, my rent went up $200, making it a total of $1,800 a month for a studio in Hawthorne. I'm still struggling to afford food, medication, and just basic living. The Olympic wage won't make me rich, but it will let me breathe. Less stress means fewer health issues. I live with an autoimmune disease, and every dollar makes a difference, not just for me, but for every working person trying to hold it together. Please vote yes next week. We can't wait any longer.
Before the next speaker comes up to speak, I'd like to call more names. Eddie Morin, Vera Kashki, Judith Serlin, Ebert Lopez, Maria Torres, Lisandro Presa, Janice Corvett, Joseph Wendt.
Next speaker, would you like to speak to item number one, or just general public comment? Or both?
Mi nombre es Herbert Lopez. Trabajo para Fly and Food por diez años.
My name is Herbert Lopez. I've been working for Flying Food Group for 10 years.
Representamos este, más de 500 trabajadores. Que, mi sueldo es de 20.73 la hora, y tengo una hija que sueña con ir a la universidad. Estamos pagando renta bien alta.
Yes, I represent, I'm part of a union that represents more than 500 workers. I am making $23.7, $20.73 an hour, and I am trying to support a daughter who dreams of going to the university.
He tenido que, que trabajar en otro trabajo para poder solventar los, los gastos familiares.
I've had to take on another job to be able to keep up with my family's bills.
Y ahora estamos aquí para solicitarles que nos ayuden a poder este, que aprueben el sueldo olímpico o sueldo digno.
And now I am here to ask for your support, for you guys to help us by approving the Olympic wage or the livable wage.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Speaker, would you like to speak to item number one, general public comment, or both?
Comentario público.
Okay, you have one minute.
Buenos días a todos. Mi nombre es Maria Santos Gonzalez.
Yes, hello, everybody. My name is Maria Santos Gonzalez.
La razón que estoy aquí es porque necesitamos que nos ayuden a pasar el sueldo olímpico.
And the reason why I'm here is because we need you to help us by approving the Olympic wage.
Trabajo para Fly Food por siete años.
I've been working for Flying Food for seven years.
Y sigo ganando 20 dólares con 73 centavos, y no es justo para la eco, para lo que estamos viviendo hoy día.
And I am still making $20.73 an hour, and it is not fair, given what we are having, given the costs that we face here on a daily basis.
Yo vivo sola, estoy pagando un costo de renta más de 2,500.
I live by myself, and I am paying more than $2,500 for rent.
Y que, y tengo que buscar otro part-time para poder suplir todos mis gastos.
And I would have to find another part-time job to cover all of my expenses.
Ya tengo 66 años y aún todavía sigo trabajando porque no me puedo retirar.
And I am 66 years old, and still I keep on working because I'm not able to retire.
Por eso aprovecho esta oportunidad para, para representar a mis compañeros, que es la misma batalla que tenemos desde hace ya varios años, y seguimos en las mismas. Por favor, pido la cooperación de todos ustedes para que todos podamos tener una vida pues más digna de vivir.
And that is why I am here representing all of my workers that are facing the same challenges as I am, so that please, we ask your support to approve this, so that we may all earn a livable wage. Thank you.
Speaker, would you like to speak to item number one, general public comment, or both?
General public comment.
You'll have one minute.
Hi, my name is Leslie Mesa. I'm an organizer with Unite Here Local 11 and a proud daughter of a housekeeper. I am one of the organizers assigned to Flying Food Group. It's an airline catering company for LAX. I was disgusted and angry when I heard the stories of seven women breaking their silence when they shared their stories of sexual harassment. However, I felt inspired and empowered to see them overcome their fear and be willing to continue to share their stories to seek change. It's very frustrating to see that their company has not taken action. Many of these women have spoken at Lawa, spoken to some of you and some of your staffers to share their stories. Flying Food Group is a company operating at the LAX Airport, and that is why we urge you to support these workers as they seek to fight against sexual harassment in their workplace. We call on you to make Flying Food Group accountable. Thank you.
Before the next speaker speaks, I'd like to call the remaining names on the queue. Esperanza Montes, Jeremiah, Adam, Jesse, Gretchen W., Ada, Jasmine, Jessica De La Cruz, Esperanza Montes, General D.
Speaker, would you like to speak to item number one, general public comment, or both?
Hi, I'm Eddie Morin. I'm a veteran. I'm also a member of American Legion Post 804 in East Los Angeles. We have decided to conduct a Memorial Day observance this year at the Five Points in East Los Angeles. There is one problem, and my comments are addressed to Ms. Ujalo. Isabella, we have tried repeatedly to contact your office. They have consistently ignored us, Lord. We've phoned them, we texted them. I want very much to get together so we can have a meeting and discuss the particulars with you or with your staff. Please, help us out. Thank you.
Speaker, would you like to speak to item number one, general public comment, or both?
What's the second agenda item?
You can speak to item number one.
Um, I don't know what it is, so I'll just take the one minute. I'm here to speak on behalf of my community. I live in Boyle Heights, CD14. We've been fighting for years to have dignified streets. I came with Mr. Morin today because he's a hero, he's an author, he's second generation, third generation here in this country, and his, he fought for our country, his dad fought for our country, his dad created the GI Forum in California. He's an author of many books. Here because we don't, our memorial for veterans in East LA at the Cinco Puntos has dry grass. The monuments have been stolen. We had to replace them ourselves. We don't, we want support. The grass shouldn't be brown. The grass should look nice. The gutter should look nice. Our city is, our community is very trashy, and it's not okay. We have Olympics, it's a very beautiful community here, and our children are suffering, and our memorials to our veterans are not the way they should look for our community or for the city of LA.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next speaker.
Speaker, would you like to speak to item number one, general public comment, or both?
Hi, my name is Suda Serlin, and I'm speaking from the Teamsters. We're speaking to general public comment.
You'll have one minute.
During budget deliberations, we've learned that the crossing guard, that there's discussion about whether or not to keep the crossing guard program. We urge the council to move carefully on this and not to reinvent the wheel. Once upon a time, crossing guard duties were performed by police. It was then given to traffic officers, and then because it was too expensive, it was given to crossing guards. The city council, once upon a time, tried to contract out the program. It didn't work. They had to hire back the crossing guards, and, I mean, it was a major disaster. They had to hire back the crossing guards, and then they had to pay additional costs for that. So let's talk about the cost. The cost of traffic officers, they're full-time, they're permanent. Crossing guards are part-time. People are in hard-to-fill positions. They come into the workforce, they're part-time people, they're hard-to-fill, they come into those jobs for the first time. Secondly, we're looking at jurisdiction issues, whether it's crossing guards, whether it is the work of crossing guards, can that actually be performed by traffic officers?
Speaker, your time is up.
We do have a union contract on that issue. Third thing we would like to talk about further and will at other times is around the volunteer program and LAUSD.
Speaker, your time is up.
So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Serlin. Again, it's always good to see you. Next person.
Speaker, would you like to speak to item number one, general public comment, or both?
Both.
You have one minute for the item and one minute for general public comment. Please start with the item.
Regarding the item, I would like to support any form of affordable housing. Right now, we are cutting our budget for housing. When we are dealing with a housing crisis, and our money should be going towards more housing rather than cutting our budget towards something like this that could help improve our communities. I would like to move into general public comment. The proposed budget doubles LAPD funding from 2017 numbers, yet crime has gone down. Also, data has shown the safest countries don't have more police, they have more equity. The fact that more than 1,000 jobs will be cut and important services closed like daycares, day labor centers... day labor centers, and Vision Zero shows the goal of this budget is not to help people but to prepare to expel the poor, houseless folks from the streets and oppose protesters leading up to the Olympics. The police budget should be scaled back to 20% instead of 48%. Traffic violence exceeds homicides, and every year the budget has increased, those numbers have increased. I strongly oppose money being spent on helicopters rather than on people. Our cities should be preparing for floods and more disasters, not on more punitive measures. It's also a shame that our city council doesn't behave in a more professional manner and walks around while people are giving public comment, it is embarrassing for our city to see this. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Speaker, would you like to speak to item number one, general public comment, or both?
Oh, just general public comment.
You'll have one minute.
Hi, my name is Yasmin Quirino, I am here to speak about the living wage ordinance. I beg for you to continue to support us on the Olympic wage. It is crucial for us, the employees at LAX Airport, to have better quality of life and not have to live paycheck to paycheck. It is very important for us to get this rate so we can put food on our tables, pay rent and bills. Due to the inflation, everything is very expensive, and it is, and it is no longer possible to survive with our current wages in this economy anymore. We can't live here any longer in poverty with our miserable wages. We ask for respect and dignity for the middle class of Los Angeles, no more delays. Please vote yes, thank you.
Thank you very much, next speaker.
Speaker, would you like to speak to item number one, general public comment, or both?
General public comment, please.
You'll hold one minute.
All right, good morning, my name's Adam from LA Community Action Network, and I'm here in solidarity with some tenants from the Produce Hotel on Central Avenue, and in solidarity with some tenants who couldn't come here today, including like elderly, disabled folks who have a lot of trouble getting down here, particularly when the council member elected to represent them doesn't listen. But on Wednesday, you all voted unanimously to take the Produce Hotel in Council District 14 out of the REIT program, and while the initial complaints that put it in the REIT program might have been met, according to what limited work is done by the Housing Department, we see the conditions in there, the tenants have to continue living in these conditions, and we're demanding that LAHD not only comes back and does a full reinspection, but they do it alongside the tenants who have to live in these conditions.
Thank you, next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Jessie, and I respectfully ask that Councilmember Gerardo, please give me attention, I live in your district, I live at the Produce, I've been there for four years. I am also a member of LACAN, and I just want to be heard. I live there, like I said, and the living conditions are inhabitable, we have mold, we have mice, we have roaches. I'm a, I am also in the gay community, and it is unsafe to live there, we get beat, we get harassed, I've been attacked twice, I've made two police reports, and even the police officers coming to respond to attempted rape. I understand there's other callers, but I mean, the time that they get there, because it's the Produce, they, like, we're the last resort, like, oh yeah, I forgot, I gotta go. All I ask is if you guys would please do a full reinspection of our building alongside the tenants who live there in these conditions, thank you for your time.
Speaker, would you like to speak to item number one, general public comment, or both?
Uh, general comment.
You'll have one minute.
Uh, my name's Jeremiah, I live at the Produce, I've been there for three years. I don't know how much money has been put into the whole receivership, but I'm pretty sure you guys have, since you've voted on all of it, but I do know that since, the only thing in my building that has changed is the floors get waxed and they're shinier, and they put a mural in. Aside from that, everything else is the same. We still have holes in the walls and the ceilings, we have mold, we have roach infestation, none of that has been fixed. We haven't had soap or toilet paper in any of the bathrooms since I've lived there, and I know that with the security that has been new, it has cost $600 a day, $4,200 a week, $16,000 a month, that's for one building. For the 17, that's $570,000 a year, and for the last two, that's over a million dollars. Out of that million dollars, none of it went to us, at all. So I don't know what you guys are voting on, or how you guys are making that okay, but I don't think that's okay when that's supposed to be set aside to help the tenants.
Thank you very much, next speaker.
Speaker, would you like to speak to item number?
When it comes to public comment, council chambers is empty, the only true Angelina who is still here is the roaches, but nevertheless, I still testify. General Doga shut it down organizing with LACAN, and I'm here today with the Human and Civil Rights Committee to support tenants in the Produce Hotel, and we're gonna continue to come here, so you get mad and pissed off about us, right? We're gonna come here for three things is meant. One, we get a, a reinspection date on the calendar ASAP. Two, we need tenants to be a part of that inspection, they're the ones that's living in the conditions, they're the only ones that can point it out, nobody else, right? And then, three, we need for those conditions to be made anew, right? And we're gonna continue to come back, like I said, and just like we say in the hood in South Central, don't start none, ain't gonna be none, right? Price, because we're gonna continue to be here, right?
Great, thank you very much. I believe there are no more public comment speakers, okay? So public comment is closed?
That concludes public comment, Mr. President.
Okay, colleagues, we're gonna adjourn the meeting, is there any announcements? Seeing no announcements, any adjourning motions?
Um, there's still one item left on the desk, sir, it's item one.
Yeah, we don't have a quorum at the moment, so we're gonna adjourn the meeting. We, we can't take any actions.
So for the record, yeah, item one is left on the desk because, due to lack of quorum, so.
Okay, so we have to move to adjournment, and if there's announcements or adjourning motions, we can do that, but that's about it. Ms. Rodriguez, announcement, okay.
Happy Mother's Day to those of us that are privileged to have the greatest title on earth, and want to thank all the women in my colleagues' lives that have done a remarkable job helping to hold things together when, when we're all out doing the work that we do, but more importantly, I want to thank even the support system that I have that allows me to do what I do. And again, I said, I've said many times, I've been called a number of things, but mom is my favorite.
Okay, Council, Councilmember Price.
I too want to just thank all the mothers in the House, really appreciate the unique role they played in our existence. And along with my colleagues, Council President Mark, Mark Reese Harris-Dawson, and my colleague Heather Hutt, we're hosting a Mother's Day celebration at Obama Park tomorrow. It's gonna be an exciting celebration, music, food, fun, a chance to honor our mothers and also celebrate the community, so come out, it's a free event from 11 o'clock on to about three or four, as I said, music, fun, and community. Thank you.
Okay, any other announcements? Seeing no announcements, are there any adjourning motions? Seeing no adjourning motions, let's go out there and honor the mothers of the world and of Los Angeles, this meeting is adjourned.